Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Face the Texas flag.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Item number two is the invocation. For that Pastor Sean Reed, Crossword sir. Welcome sir. Glad to have you here.
Likewise. Pastor Shannon Stewart, good to see you guys again. So let us bow our heads. God of all creation, we thank you for this day and the many blessings we have received. We thank you for every life we've been able to impact in a positive way. We thank you for entrusting us with the responsibility of serving our community. We thank you for the ability to use our minds to discern your will and work to create a strong and healthy community. We thank you for the community and for all those that serve it. For those that protect, those that repair, those that work in parks, those that work on the roads, those who plan and those who make the plans happen. We thank you for those who heal and those who counsel, those who govern and those who elect. Lord, we pray for the hungry, the unemployed, the uninsured, and the mentally and physically ill, and those who fall in the minority of our needs. As this meeting begins this evening, I pray for each person here. Give each person clarity of mind, creativity, compassion, due diligence, integrity, and a sense of urgency for what our community needs. I pray for each councilperson and elected official. I pray that their households will be blessed. I pray for their peace and balance as they manage the many tasks in front of them. I pray that their lives will be fruitful beyond what they can even imagine, leaving a legacy for both their family and their community in which they serve. I pray for their words and their actions. I pray that they will bring healing, restoration, security, trust, and comfort to those who serve. I pray for extended joy and patience in the long hours that are sometimes necessary to get the job done. I pray that tonight they will have a listening hearts, listening ears, thoughtful words, a presence of mind, and an open heart. In Jesus' name, let us all say amen.
Amen.
Thank you Reverend. Appreciate that. Item number three is our participation. That's covered on the screen. Please silence your devices, tablets, et cetera, so we can have a good meeting. One note, if you need to speak on a listed item, please contact Janet to fill out a form. We can only speak on items that are listed on the agenda. Item number four is the consent agenda. A is action regarding minutes of September 3rd. B is action regarding minutes of September 10th. C is action regarding minutes of September 17th. D, action regarding the building improvement grant agreement with NDFII North Town Center LLC. E, consideration action regarding award of contract for Saginaw manhole and pipe rehabilitation contract. If there's any questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we pass the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you Valerie.
Second.
Patrick second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Those opposed? Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum this evening. Got a full house. Item number five, consideration action regarding funds, approved funds for the Keep Saginaw Beautiful Committee project, wrapping of traffic control boxes. For that, Keith Reinhardt, Director of Community Services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Bear with me tonight. I have a slight cold, a little allergy thing going on, so as she scoots away from me, but my wall. Excited to come back to you and talk to you about this. We, beautification, or Keep Saginaw Beautiful Committee started a beautification project several years ago, trying to find different ways that we can beautify this great city. And one of the ways that we came up with was to wrap those ugly traffic control boxes, silver, gray, whatever you want to call them, just sit there, take up space. They're needed, of course, but we noticed in some other cities where they have wrapped those with photos of whatever they chose, whatever that city chose. And it really brightened up this place. It brought art into the community. And we did that a few years ago and wrapped. At the time, we had eight traffic control boxes and we wrapped them with winners of the previous years of images of Saginaw photo contest. The life expectancy of those are, I would say, are about two years. You can get three years out of them, but during that third year, you're starting to get the flaking and the fading and it looks pretty obvious. And there are some cities that I know that have wrapped the boxes and then I'll say, dare say that they probably neglected them a little bit. They let them go a little too long because they're starting to fade and they look not as presentable as I think the city would probably want them to be. So we're being proactive and coming at you, to talk to you again about this, about re-wrapping our boxes, and I think we have nine now, re-wrapping the boxes with the previous two years of images of Saginaw photo contest. Do you have any questions?
Question for Keith. Cindy?
I have one quick question. Do we keep an archive of what the boxes look like before, or are we going to be replacing it with the same photos?
We do keep an archive of the previous, what the boxes looked like or what the current ones are on there, but we're replacing them all with new photos this time, just to give a fresh look and...
Other questions, Council?
I think it's great. I think it's awesome. Though, you're right, those things are ugly. And the ones I see, I like how they look. Other cities have done it. I think we keep going. This is a, I like doing it with the winners of the City of Saginaw beautification thing, so I think it's awesome.
One quick thing I failed to mention, the company that did it last time, or the Victory Graphics were using the same company again, they're actually giving us the exact same price to apply the wraps on there. But the difference in price from this year to the time before is to, you had to remove the old ones.
Makes sense.
I run every day. During the summer months, I'm generally on the treadmill because it's not as much fun running when it's 96 degrees outside. Still a little bit, but not that much fun.
We don't want to have to replace you quite yet, so...
And you're getting close. It's, when it cools off, I run outside and I run past a lot of those boxes and I can see the wear and aging.
Alright, excellent. Any other questions, Council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Keep Saginaw Beautiful Committee project wrapping of traffic boxes as presented.
Thank you Patrick.
Second.
Charlie second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Those opposed or aren't? Thank you Keith. Well done. Next, we are item number six, consideration and action regarding authorization for city staff and consultants to proceed with privately placing general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2019 via competitive bidding process for the purchase of achieving annual debt service savings so long as certain saving threshold can be met. We say for that City Manager Kim Quinn.
Mayor and City Council, we have an opportunity to have some savings in debt service. The presentation, brief presentation was in your packet and Andrew Friedman from Samco is here to go over that with you.
Welcome sir.
Thank you very much for having me. Andrew Friedman with Samco Capital Markets. A short summary of the refunding opportunity that's before the city. You have two different debts that become callable December 1st, 2019. We have the ability to current refund those bonds within 90 days of their call date, so we fall within that window now to do that. The outstanding debt is your certificates of obligation Series 2009 and your general obligation refunding bond Series 2012, total of about $1,830,000 of debt outstanding. Coupons ranging from 4.3% on one of the issues to 4.2% on another issue. We anticipate being able to sell refunding bonds at a lower interest rate. And you're basically swapping out the higher interest rate payments with lower interest rate payments and generating annual savings to the city. As you'll see from that second page of the refunding summary, that table on the left, moving from left to right, shows your debt service on these two issues if you do nothing. The expected debt service by going through a refunding and getting a 2% rate on this refunding, and then the savings that's generated thereof. Ran this at 2%, if you'll remember from our tax note sale, we were around 1.5% for seven years. We've seen interest rates tick up roughly 20 basis points or so since then. Obviously, we don't know where interest rates would be in two weeks when we expect to lock in interest rates. I hope for them to stay where they are, in which case we'll do better than this. But this is really what we consider the bare minimum of savings that's worth pursuing. And the calculus for that is pretty simple. You'll see the savings is just under $40,000 there. The costs of issuance, what it will take to get this refunding done from the bond council fee, Attorney General, financial advisor, and the various parties involved are roughly $35,000. We don't want to recommend anything, proceeding with anything that's at or below the cost to go through the process. Now, the cost, the savings that's shown here is already net of those costs, but we do want to be over that 2%, 2.5% savings threshold if we can get there. At the October 15th meeting, we'll have the final interest rates in hand. We'll know exactly what those savings are and it'll be your opportunity to vote it up or down then with no risk of taking on, you know, the cost of the transaction. Current refunding, the logic is if you can save a dollar, there's no economic reason why you wouldn't proceed. But again, that is completely at y'all's discretion and we'll know all of the facts in two weeks when we come back with those interest rates, but I expect to generate more than the $38,000 shown there. With your permission this evening, we would proceed to solicit for bids and send out a private placement bid memorandum to, we've got a list of roughly 40 local, state, and national bank institutions to privately place this debt with. We'd have those bids back for you in two weeks and then we'd close on November 13th as shown on the last page of the handout. And then lastly, because we just went through a tax note issue, I do want to, tax note issuance, I do want to hit on the fact that the security for this is different than the tax note. So the question I would anticipate from any of you would be, why didn't we do this all together when we sold the tax note? And the answer there is simple. The Texas Local Government Code that authorizes you to issue general obligation refunding bonds, which are the security you have to issue to refund your debt, is different than what authorizes you to issue a tax note. There's no mechanism for you to issue a general obligation and a refunding bond without going to the voters first. And so the tax notes were done outside of that authority. They had to be issued as tax notes. These, even if you had done this back when we sold the tax notes, you would have been issuing general obligation refunding bonds 2019 and tax notes 2019. So there's no economies of scale. We've pushed it this far so that we can get as close to that call date as possible. And then anytime you wait after the call date, you're giving up savings by letting those bonds progress. But if there are no savings in two weeks when we come back with a final interest rate and we don't proceed, those bonds will be outstanding. If interest rates were to fall again, we'd have an opportunity to come try again, but obviously there are no guarantees when we're talking about interest rates. So turn it over to you all for any questions that you have for me.
Council questions for Andrew? Any questions?
I just have a couple.
Sure Patrick.
So let me understand the net cost.
Yes, sir.
So the $40,000 that we're looking at today, the savings is actually $75,000. The $35,000's already taken out.
Correct.
So it's $40,000 net.
Correct.
Okay. So it won't be $5,000 net.
No, no, no.
It's $40,000 net.
$40,000 based on the numbers.
And that's based on 2%?
Correct.
So if we go 1.5, just like we did with the notes...
I don't have that number written down anymore.
Probably another $18,000 is what it looks like.
Yeah, it's closer to $55,000 or so, if I remember correctly.
Okay. So I can't see any reason in the world why we wouldn't do it.
No brand. To save some money.
Correct.
It's a good opportunity. I say we take it. So any other questions, Council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the refinancing of our bond, our debt, for the 2007 and 2010 issuance. Is that right?
2009 and 2012.
2009, 2012. Okay. 2009, 2012 issuance.
Okay. Thank you Patrick.
Assistant.
Valerie second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Those opposed or aren't? Thanks sir.
Thank you. I'll see you in a couple weeks.
Look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
Alright, so we are item number, item number seven, consideration action regarding ordinance 2019, Test 21, adopting regulations for protection of the city logo and city steel, city seal, and prohibiting the unauthorized use thereof. For that, City Attorney Bryn Mair.
Yes, Mayor and Council. We've had some discussions on this ordinance for some time. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. This ordinance essentially provides that the city's logo and the city's seal are the intellectual property of the city. It creates a licensing mechanism that requires anyone that desires to use either of those items to enter into an agreement. It also criminalizes the misuse of the logo or seal. The reason why we've added both is because of the restrictions under federal law and seeking trademark protection for the city seal. And so I think it's important that we protect both by ordinance.
Council questions for Bryn?
I have a question.
Mary? Let Mary go.
Okay. Now, this probably cannot be retroactive, or can't?
Well, the way I look at it is every day that there is a violation moving forward from the effective date of the ordinance, that's not a retroactive application.
Okay.
And as you all may recall, it's my contention that we have at least a common law copyright for both the logo and the seal, since they were produced using public funds.
And let's be careful not to talk any specifics on this. We're just talking about this ordinance. So let's discuss the ordinance as is presented as Bryn's. So, sorry, any other questions? Valerie?
The only question I had was where the part where it said the city manager had the okay to, if somebody came and asked, shouldn't that be brought before the city council?
Well, so it does say that, but it also says that you need to enter into an agreement. And so from a policy perspective, we can either bring the agreement to council each and every time, or at some future point, and it's not accounted for in this agreement. There's no blanket authorization for the city manager to execute these. You all would have the authority, if you chose, to give the mayor the authority in the future to sign these agreements, so you don't have to see them on each occasion, but you could if you would like.
Right, okay.
The city manager frankly is listed in there as the point of contact to administer the program, essentially.
Cindy, do you have a question?
And just a simple question, because I've seen some variations of the logo, the change of colors and things like that. Does that no longer apply because it doesn't have the yellow background and the blue towers and the star?
You know, I think if there've been some variations on it, I mean, that's going to be a fact test. I think certainly if it's intended to be a copy of our intellectual property, I would argue that it still falls under the purview of this ordinance. But, so that would be my take on that.
Other questions? Alright, I will entertain a motion then.
Mayor, I make a motion that we pass the consideration or the ordinance number 2019 21, adopting regulations for protection of our city logo and city steel, and prohibiting unauthorized use thereof.
Thank you Valerie. Cindy second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Those opposed? Excellent. Thank you Bryn. Moving on. Item number nine, briefing on the Bailey-Boswell Overpass Project. For that, Director of Public Works Rick Trice.
Yes, Sir Mayor and Council. Just want to note that a week ago, last Saturday, was my two-year anniversary with Saginaw, so still pleased to be here.
Congratulations.
Even though it seems like the entire two years, we've been trying to get this bridge project passed impasse, so to speak. I think I've got some good news tonight and maybe a path going forward I'd like to share with you. Just some history on what some of the issues have been that we've been facing since I got here. Of course, we have three permits required before we could construct the bridge, one with TechDOT, and one with UP Art Railroad, and one from BNSF. As we got into the project, or as I got into the project, we became aware of issues that, for example, BNSF had with the way that beams were being constructed within their right-of-way as part of means and methods for the contractor. So they had some, I guess, a failure of a beam that caused some issues in their railroad up north, and so they were ultra-sensitive to the way that we were constructing our beams. So we went through a review process, a justification process, through their structural people to try to get that alleviated. UP similarly had gone through a change of personnel here locally where we had commitments from previous staff to put a bent or a column inside their right-of-way. That staff turned over and then a policy changed within that railroad. All of a sudden, didn't allow us to put a column within their right-of-way. And so we've been lobbying for the last six months or more to try to get that waiver done. And so in the last two weeks, we have received responses from both. First of all, say that our railroad permit or our permit with TechDOT is complete, so we're good there. On September 6th, BNSF told us that their structural review is complete. They accepted our justification for the construction of the beams. And so they are working with their inspection estimates and railroad agreements to go forward with that project. On the UP side, on September 12th, they notified us that our request for a waiver had been approved, which was a major concern for us, so that was a major milestone. They still have the project under some structural review, but we don't expect that there's going to be any substantive comments that will come out of that review. And they also will be entering into agreements with us, performing estimates for construction and railroad agreements that'll come before this body again for approval. Having said that then, I will say that earlier this year, we actually advertised the project for construction. And as we got into it, we decided that the risks were too high for delay because of these issues, and so we suspended that bid in March of last year. In a perfect world, we would go to construction, go to bid in construction with all of our permits in hand and all of the utilities out of the way, so there are no delays and potential delay claims on part of the contractor. So having said that again, we've asked Kim Lee Horn to go ahead and look back at the plans again, just to make sure that we're still good in terms of what the comments have been received for the railroad, to update the estimates, and then to be in a position to advertise the project as early as late November, early December. That would put us opening bids sometimes late December, early January. That way, we'll know where we're at with funding. I'll also direct you to the spreadsheet that I placed at the dice for you, and you'll look in the cost subtotal column. You'll see some shaded area. Those are areas where, which are basically placeholder amounts, estimates for different activities. Two of those activities are...
Hey Rick, the shaded did not come through very well on our copies. I can't tell what's shaded or not, can y'all?
I'm sorry. I'll start. The shaded area begins with the construction overpass estimate, the 11.7 million.
Okay.
And then it would end at the Walmart easement with the 10,000. So all of those line items between those two boundaries are just estimates or placeholder amounts. So one of the other things that'll be coming back to you sometime in December, perhaps the same time that the award of contract, would be an IPO with Kim Lee Horn. You'll recall that earlier this year, we had a revised advanced funding agreement that came to us from TechDOT. What TechDOT had decided was that the bridge is what they would consider an off system. It's not a TechDOT bridge. So they're treating it like a driveway permit. It's expensive driveway permit, but still, it's a driveway permit. And so the bad news for us means that TechDOT was not going to inspect the project like it was their bridge. We're going to have to hire a third-party inspection to inspect it for us. Kim Lee Horn will also have an IPO for construction management, and that would be to answer questions on the design of the bridge, review shop drawings, approve shop drawings, measurements, and payment, those sorts of activities, just like they do on any of our other capital projects. Again, those things will all come to council probably sometime in December. The only final item there, and we have placeholder amounts for the agreements with UP and BNSF. The only other item is a Walmart easement, and that's for a deceleration lane that would allow traffic to get out of the main lane of traffic, so they can have ingress egress into Walmart, or ingress into Walmart. So we've had discussions with Walmart. Everything's moving forward, so we don't expect any delays there. So I hope that's a good news story. Maybe we'll get something advertised and get a number, a real number, in front of the council that we can try to work through something. So if you've got any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those.
Council questions for Rick?
Not at this time. I want to see the number.
Yep. I'll be interested to see the number as well. Fingers crossed.
I'm telling you.
I know. Yeah. Well, good. I'm glad we're making some progress, Rick. Thank you. Alright. Moving forward, at 6:25, we're reassessing the workshop. Item number 10, Economic Development Snapshot. For that, Director of Economic Development, Laura Wachelt.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. So Gabe said that we're kind of on a time crunch and I can only have about two hours. So I'm going to try to keep it to that. No, I'm just kidding. But I am going to try to go quickly through this information. I'd like it if we could hold questions till the end, just so I can get through it. What I really want to talk to you about this evening are goals as they relate to economic development. So what I'd like to do is kind of talk first about goals for the field of economic development, kind of generally, what are the things that we are... Oh, I'm already losing one. Man, okay. What are the goals for the field that we look at? What are the goals that have prior been placed, priorly been placed here at the city through different initiatives, strategic plans, pardon me? What feedback was received through council one-on-one meetings that we recently conducted with each of you? And then kind of discuss some of the future opportunities that exist. So I'm going to get right into it, and I'm going to spend a little bit extra time on these first couple slides, and then I'll start to move quicker as we get to the middle part. But what I want to do is talk a little bit, just use this as an opportunity, talk a little bit about something I'm really, really passionate about, and that's my field, economic development. So a lot of people say, well, what is it? Well, it really is the cultivation and capitalization of wealth in a market economy. Doesn't that sound super dry, right? So what does that mean? Okay, so if you think of a market economy really simply as you've got producers and you've got consumers, and producers are the ones who are making goods and services and they're putting them out there in the market, and consumers are the ones who are buying those goods and services, then you can consider those transactions, the act of making products and goods, putting them in the market, and the act of buying those goods and services as the wealth that we're talking about, okay? And so in economic development, at some point in the early 80s, it's a fairly young field, but in the early 80s, cities and taxing entities started to say, wait a second. There are opportunities in these market transactions where we, as public entities, get revenue through taxes and fees. And that exists in the areas of the production, the business cycles, the production, anywhere from fees, business licenses, inventory taxes, you name it, to sales taxes when consumers purchase goods, right? So that's a big part of where cities, counties, school districts get their funding from. And so in the early 80s, cities started to say, you know what? If we actually were to really get a good grip on what is happening in our market, and really try to maximize the wealth that exists there, and really try to make it as efficient as we can, we're going to be increasing our revenues that we can then use to bake more and better community services. We can actually put towards lowering other taxes, such as property taxes on residents. And so they said, you know what? Okay, that's what we're going to do. We're going to have a dedicated person, or group, or department that's going to say, okay, I want to have my pulse on what's going on in the market, in the economy, and I want to maximize it. Now, at first, what they said was, alright, well, if we have as many businesses as possible, then we're going to have more goods and services in the market, and then people are going to be buying it. That's how we're going to maximize our wealth, right? And then pretty quickly, and so economic development was really about selling. How many businesses can I get in my community? How many businesses can I get to open? Well, they found out pretty quickly when businesses started closing, that it doesn't really matter if you have goods and services out there, you have producers, if you don't have consumers buying, right? So then in the 90s, they said, okay, wait a second. We need people to have jobs. We need people who are working and they have disposable income, so they can be funneling that wealth into buying goods and services, right? So the 90s was all about jobs, and that's really where the big boxes, the telecom centers, all of these things with lots of jobs, you know, big footprints, but you could go into a store and you could get your groceries on one end, and get your clothing on the other, and pick up a card for grandma's birthday next week, all in one store, right? Big restaurants, big, big, big. That was really the 90s. Well, then in the 2000s, all of a sudden, people started saying, you know what? Housing is expensive. Housing bubble burst. People started saying, you know what? I can work remotely. I'm okay with traveling to work. You know, maybe I have, maybe I'm going to change fields. People started changing the way they worked. And so then all of a sudden, cities started saying, you know what? It doesn't just work if all we care about are jobs and businesses. We need to actually be a place that consumers are choosing to live, because they don't have to live here and they can keep their jobs. They can purchase whatever they want, and they don't have to have a physical store nearby. And so now, the field of economic development has really changed, and it now really encompasses a lot more than simply how many businesses we can open or how many jobs we can bring in. So economic development has really turned into strategic planning. It's turned into long-term... It's turned into long-term, thoughtful, how can we be a place that is going to sustain development, not for today, but for tomorrow? So, you know, it's kind of like, I don't know if you've ever heard in business, but people will say, if you're worried about getting your profits at the end of the month, you're not going to make it to the end of the year. Well, that's the same in economic development. And you've seen this, a lot of cities in North Texas, that at some point, they've gotten to a certain pinnacle where they felt like they were on top, and they stopped. They weren't looking in the future. And what happened is they pretty quickly started to decline because markets change. And all of a sudden, they weren't pushing. So economic development really is about pushing. So economic development, if you think of it as an umbrella, again, there are really two major focuses under that umbrella. So business development on one side and community development on the other. If you think about it with the market example I gave before, business development is going to be generating new investment and maintaining investment, your producers in the community. Community development is going to be ensuring long-term consumers into your economy, okay? So you've got the mechanism to generate the wealth, but then you've also got the fuel. You've got the people who are now the innovative drivers of technology, of innovation. They're the ones who are working, shopping, changing the world. So under business development, the two sections you'll see, there's recruitment and retention, right? So recruitment does not mean replacing. It doesn't mean getting rid of the old and bringing in new. Recruitment means adding to the wealth that currently exists, okay? Retention is going to be maintaining the wealth that exists in an economy, okay? Those are always your goals. But realistically, in a movable market, you're never going to be able to have 100% retention. And if you do, again, probably going to be struggling pretty quickly because things are changing in business. And so things change in the markets, things change in your cities. But recruitment is about adding, retention is about maintaining. There are three major sort of activities that you focus on under recruitment. It's marketing, advertising, and selling. The big difference I can say about that is marketing is simply saying we exist and we're good, okay? Advertising, and let me give you an example of marketing. When I first started here about a year and a half ago, I haven't hit Rick's massive two-year mark. But when I started a year and a half ago here, I would go to North Texas Commercial Association of Realtors Expos. I would go to Local Biz Now seminars. And I would say, hi, my name's Alora Walkles, and I am the new Director of Economic Development for the City of Saginaw. And pretty unanimously, everyone would say, where is that? Right? If I did get somebody who recognized it, they'd say, is that where those big empty building things are that you can see from downtown Fort Worth? And I'd say, well, let me tell you, they're not empty. Now, when I go to these conferences, even after a year and a half, I'll have at least a handful of people who will come up to me and say, wait, Saginaw, right? Oh, wait a second. I heard, fill in the blank. Now, I'll tell you, about 90% of it is really good things, but I do have about 10%. Well, I heard that there's, unfortunately, just news gets around. But that's marketing. It's simply saying we exist. It's a constant build. You have to do it all the time. We exist and we're good, right? Advertising is actually where you get all of the information about what properties you have, what are the resources you have, what workforce, what location, major thoroughfares. What are the things, the resources that you have? And putting those out there to say, hey, we got what you need. Not only do we exist, but we got what you need. Then selling used to be, hey, does anybody want to come? Hey, does anyone want to come here? Not anymore. Now, selling is really about courting. It's really about, okay, we're the right choice for you because you're also the right choice for us. And selling, if you're doing it right, you're saying no as many times as you're saying yes. Because you want to make sure that you're getting the right fit. So selling has really changed, again, as it relates to economic development. Retention, under maintaining, three major pieces of that are information sharing, making connections, and communication. So again, to differentiate these, sharing information is really about making our local businesses understand that they're part of the community, that we invest in them because they are investing in us. It's sharing information on what's going on. It's including them. It's just really telling them about, hey, you're part of this team that we're all on. And it makes them feel like they actually have stake in the community because I promise, if they're just going to make what's the best business decision at the end of the day, and they don't have any ties to the community, they're more likely to leave. The connections. So I get asked this a lot. So I can't fix a business. I can't open a business. I can't do those things, right? What I can do though is understand very clearly what resources are available in this region to help businesses with whatever it is that their needs are. So if you come to me and say, I have a great idea for a business I want to open, I'm going to say, great, do you have a business plan? Do you need someone to help you develop a business plan? Do you have financing? There's a really great, you know, group over here that meets at TCC, and they talk about this kind of financing. Let me connect you, right? So that's a big piece of what retention looks like in public economic development. And then communication is constant relationship building. It's saying, what is it that you need? Are you expecting a downturn in your sales? Are you going to be consolidating? Are you going to be expanding? Is there something that you're worried about? What can I do to help connect you and to help at least be on the pulse? So if I hear something coming up in the community that addresses that need, I can get that to you. So again, those are really what retention's about. Some people will say, well, is it networking? Is it kind of promoting? Is it this kind of thing? And those usually fall under a chamber of commerce. But economic development as an actual professionalized field is about analyzing the economy and doing the best to connect businesses to the professional resources they need. So community development, again, it's really about getting people here and getting them to care about the place. People, it used to be all about quality of life, right? That was the buzzword. Well, what's the quality of life there? Well, that's not it anymore because of the way that things have changed in business, the way that people can live and work in completely separate places. And so now, quality of life is really, can I have my job? Can I have the kind of house I want? Are there the resources there that are the quality that I prefer, right? But to take an example of that, if I want to live in Saginaw and I want, you know, a certain kind of home and I have a job in this area, I could technically live in Saginaw or I could live in Hazlet. Wouldn't be that different as far as does it have the resources I need, right? But that's where quality of place comes in. So then you're talking about, what's the identity of the community, right? What kind of amenities are offered in one place over another? Does the location, is it what I feel like I can really identify with? So that's community, or that's quality of place. Then there's also diversity and inclusivity, and the differences between those two. Does it have what you need? So let's say, as an example, if my family is of the Hare Krishna faith, is there a temple nearby that we could worship at? Are there places where I can get quality vegetarian food ingredients in the area? And then that would be diversity. And then inclusivity would be, am I going to feel safe and welcomed and understood in this community? Okay, so that's how you differentiate those. So really, you're trying to answer through all the work of economic development, you're really trying to come to the answer that you can proudly tell people believe in and have supportive evidence behind to say, yes, this is a community to invest in. Whether that is your business investing, your business existing already and continuing to invest, or you as a person and a family investing here. That's really the role of the department. Okay, so this is where I'm going to move a little bit quicker. In 2016, there was a strategic plan for economic development that was conducted. The city hired Marty Weider with Strategic Consulting Services. Marty Weider is a great, he's a well-known economic developer in North Texas. He's currently Director in Grand Prairie, which is doing some really exciting things. But he has a side consulting gig. And so in 2016, he did a SWOT analysis for the city council. SWOT being strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So he basically asked council a series of questions about what it is that they felt about the community, what are the good things, the bad things, what could be changed, that stuff. He wrote them all down in a giant book. I don't know why. He actually said, so you could take notes. And I was like, Marty, no one's going to take notes on your plan. But he, he's a great guy. He put it into basically an action plan. He said, here are the commonalities that came out of this SWOT analysis, and here's the action plan for it. And when I came in, before I accepted the job here, this is the document that I was given, right? So this is the document that I went through, I looked at. It was very easily understood. And I thought, it's pretty clear to me what the issues are. It's pretty clear to me, you know, from the action plan, what the goals are. This makes sense. And this is the document that I've really been building a lot of my operations up until now on, right? So let's talk about some of the goals and objectives that he talked about. And this might be too small to read, but target sit-down restaurants and entertainment options. Definitely what I've been doing. Establish a farmer's market. Definitely working on that. And other entrepreneurial businesses, opportunities. We've got the food truck court. I'm looking at doing some coworking opportunities, different things like that. A merchandising plan to figure out what residents want as far as businesses. That would be the Eat and Play survey that we did and will do every other year. Meet with people, developers, stay in, out in events, be a part of the community. Again, that's that marketing piece. That's very key to what economic development is about. Sort of, the best way I can describe the next goal is he wants someone who can really kind of walk alongside the developers of these larger mixed-use projects and kind of help them through the many steps. And I mean, from the very first day I got here, I got introduced to people who were already kind of talking about some projects, and I've gotten to be side by side on those. And of course, council earlier this year approved the first mixed-use development project with the square. So working on that. Reshape Saginaw Boulevard. A desire for it to look better, have more Main Street uses, all these kinds of things. That would be the proposed overlay district. That would be the building improvement grant program. That would be some of the beautification efforts. That would be working with Rick and TechDOT and his team on doing the beautification and the upgrades to the boulevard. All of that good stuff. Some public art, lighting, events, that kind of good stuff. Obviously, we've got some great, great opportunities coming forward. We've got the great Welcome to Saginaw mural, all these kinds of things falling into place under that. And the lighting on the grain elevators, we do have, we did a demo of that last Christmas. It's just so, it's so expensive. We're just waiting for that to kind of get a little cheaper. Facade building improvement grants, obviously that program is taking off really well. And then this last one is really about rebranding and trying to combat the negative existing perception of the community. This is one that I honestly have not done a whole lot on since I've been here. I feel like that's a larger conversation for all of us to have about what that looks like. So then that moves us to Lyle Summick's Vision 2033 Plan and the goals that he outlined that council approved in July of this year. The major goals of that were five. It's be fiscally responsive, improve mobility and traffic, more beautiful, livable community, vibrant activity centers, and then expand quality of life amenities. And each one of these had numerous objectives listed underneath it, right? Now, the council one-on-one meetings. These are Gabe, Janice, and myself met with all of you and talked to you about what it is that your views are on the city. And essentially, I provided you each with a standardized questionnaire in advance. And then we sat down and had a conversation about it. Now, that questionnaire was really, it was not random. It was by design. It was essentially a conversational SWOT analysis, right? So I was trying to get from you what you think strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats are to the city. I just think it's kind of cold sometimes to say, what are the threats to the city? I think a lot of times it gets a little bit messy. So it was a conversation about a SWOT analysis, essentially, right? So I can tell you that that was a great experience to get to hear directly from each of you, one-on-one, about what it is that you feel, you know, are the good and bad about the community. We did have some sort of similar responses, and we had some that were not similar. So some of the cohesive responses are everyone kind of brought up trains and grain elevators as being a big part of our identity. Everybody, I think, brought up traffic, right? Which is not a surprise, especially on Saginaw Boulevard. The signalization is important. Desire for more sit-down restaurants, beautification, especially along Saginaw Boulevard. Entertainment options, again, these are very similar to a lot that came out of the 2016 plan that was conducted. I had a number of you mention the fact that you, you know, you're acknowledging that there is land constraint. So we do need to be strategic about future planning, especially for the, for what land we have left. And I think everyone used the word unique and the desire to have more unique aspects here in Saginaw, which is great. And then everyone mentioned parks and community events as being great. So then we had some conflicting responses. And I think these are the places where we can have more conversation about kind of what that means. And what I'd like to do is, I'd like to, you know, preserve the anonymous nature of it. I don't, by any means, I told you all this in the meeting, I don't by any means want to say, well, Patrick said, right? Because it's not the point. Every bit of information that was...
I'll stand by what I say if you want to mention my name.
Well, and the reason for that is because I think that the information, the feedback that we got from the council one-on-one meetings, if you take each one singularly, individually, and you just across the board, don't look at who said it or any of that, just look at it across the board as this is information that has been given to us as staff of the city and direction, and you look at it equally, then I think that then they all become weighted the same. Does that make sense? So there were some places where I think we need to have more conversation. And so I'd like to kind of quote some of those things, just so that you understand where we're coming from, right, on this? So some examples are, when I say there was some conflict on who Saginaw is as a community, right? So we were told, for instance, Saginaw's quaint. It's a country town, right? We were also told, some people think we're a small town, but we're not. We were also told Saginaw is an industrial bedroom community. Well, those are very different views of how you view the city, right? So I think that that's a good place for us to have added conversation in the future. And we had the response, we're a blue-collar community, and that is not a bad thing. We also had, I don't want to be known as blue-collar, okay? So again, totally separate days, times, people, everything. But the feedback we're getting has, I think, room for some more conversation. What direction for Saginaw's future? So I'll tell you, we did have the response, I like Southlake Town Center. I think we could do a lot by emulating that. We also had, don't Southlake Saginaw. I mean, across the board, right? So we got, we need to showcase Saginaw's railroad history. And we got, I don't want to be known for trains, okay? So again, great opportunity for us to have bigger conversations about it. Who we should be recruiting, we need quaint shops. I want mom and pop shops, right? I also got, can we get a Kohl's? Right? I mean, none of it's bad, none of it's good. It's all just, it is what it is. But we have to sort it out, right, as a body to move forward. Who our major community partners are. I just put this in here because I was really surprised that for some responses, we got a litany of different partners. And for others, we got, I don't know. So I think, again, that's a good opportunity for us to really kind of define that moving forward. What obstacles currently exist in Saginaw? Okay. So we heard, I'd like to bring the city back together. The east side, meaning east side of the tracks, isn't really part of that. The older folks on the west are the settlers of Saginaw. But then we also got, there are longtime residents who don't consider new residents to be residents and are holding on to the old days. That's a conversation we need to have, right? We also got, our industrial core is poorly maintained and seen as a hindrance instead of the lifeblood of our economy. And then we also got, I'd prefer growth, but not heavy industrial, right? The role of economic development, a lot of the information that I got was, hey, we need some more parks, events, art, things like that. That, again, they just don't fall under the purview of economic development as, you know, a field. We also got sort of some requests for, kind of really focus on the numbers. Numbers, like how many businesses did you talk to today? How many recruitment packets did you send out this month? How many, the numbers, right? But again, whenever you're talking about economic development goals as a field and you're talking about marketing, it's hard to put that into numbers. It's hard to say, well, we went from people saying, where's Saginaw? To people saying, hey, I heard that you guys did this really cool mural that people are looking at in downtown Fort Worth, right? And you did it on the side of one of those giant buildings? I mean, that right there, I don't know how to quantify in numbers. So again, that's a discussion I think we need to really have. Okay, and I want to, I just, I want to read this to y'all, and I know that we're short on time, but I really do want to read this to you because this is one of the two quotes that we got that I think has really stuck with me and that definitely needs to be a bigger conversation. There is an apparent lack of desire for economic development. This is not just from city council, but people have lived here for forever and want the city to be like it was. Part of the issue is city council. Although no one has come out and said they don't want economic development, they've come very close by not wanting more building, their comments giving third degree to staff and nitpicky things. Y'all, that's a conversation right there that we've got to have, right? Because that is a big obstacle, not just, not just in my way, but in everybody's way. Learning from other cities' successes, again, I got from, again, Southlake has some cool stuff we can emulate. I think all cities can profit from looking at the cities around them. Some of our neighbors are doing good things. And then we got a number of no's. Nope, we should be unique, right? The rankings is a separate slide here. Growth and change. Again, we got everything from, an ideal Saginaw would be like it used to be when we had 6,000 to 7,000 residents. I absolutely hate cities. I don't want any more people here. And then we got, the city's growing and we need to get with it, right? People focus on the negative and not the positive of growth. Again, it's just a conversation that we all need to have about moving forward. As for the rankings, and I'm sorry if this is difficult to see, but I... I think you all have the presentation. I asked each of you to just do kind of a quick off-the-top-of-your-head ranking whenever asked. What are the options provided is most important to you? What are the options you feel like leads to the highest quality of life? You can see council member A, B, C, D, that, all the way down. Just a note, we did have one council member who did not choose, chose not to rank any of those. So, that one's just marked as blank. But I went through and I kind of put in green the top, most important answers, and then in red, the least important answers, just in that ranking. And then, if you kind of read across, you can see there's really not a lot of agreement. We did have kind of that quality infrastructure is important, and we did have that public parks and community events are important. And then, for some of the lower rankings, we had increasing commercial investment and having primary living wage jobs. So, that was kind of, again, just that we kind of got all over the board on some of that, which is good. It's a place for us to talk, right? So, these last two slides, what I did is I took all this information, the plan from 2016, the 2033 vision, the council meeting one-on-ones, and the actual what's been happening in the department, what the city's been doing for the last year and a half since I've been here, and what's coming up. And I kind of put it all into a spreadsheet and compared it. And the places where we converge, we converge really well. I think that in general, when you're talking about the Vision 2033, and you're talking about kind of what the goals and objectives are for the future of the city, doesn't really matter if you're pulling from this plan or that plan or the meetings or what, we're all on the same page. So, in the places where there are opportunities for more conversation, that's really a great thing. That's really something then that we can cultivate. But overall, we're all moving to the, toward the same direction. So, next steps, again, just need to continue the dialogue. I'd like feedback, you know, from y'all. It doesn't have to be now, it can be later. But what does that look like to you? Does it look like a series of workshops? Does it look like a retreat? What does that look like for you long-term? How can we kind of, again, keep moving forward on this? And then, that's it.
Thank you, Laura. Excellent work. I just want to say one thing real quick before I open it up for council. This is a start. This is not a finish. We're not going to make any final decisions tonight. This is the start of a conversation. I anticipate us doing this again, having more discussion. I think this is great. Laura, you've done a lot of work. I think it's a great start. But obviously, we have work to do. So, don't consider that we're going to be all and end all tonight. This is just a start. So, I'll open it up for council. Mary, please.
One thing that I asked myself after reviewing all these slides, just from your perspective, this is like a three-part question.
Okay.
What would you consider our biggest obstacle in attracting the appropriate kind of development? And what would you say our biggest selling point is? And what tools do you think would be the most effective for us in attracting the right kind of business?
Sure. Well, I like that question. I like the second part of it the most because honestly, that's why I'm here, is because the idea, the community of Saginaw has so many good things. And so, for me, I think the fact that you've got these iconic grain mills, you've got the train culture, you've got this really wonderful community that's been here, right in the heart of, you know, sort of west, north Texas, that's situated close to everything. You've got this really strong industrial core. I mean, for me, those were the things that excited me and brought me here, and those are the things that excite other people when I talk to them about. As well as the changing and adding demographics. People say, "Whoa, if y'all have had that much growth over a short time, well then, whoa, I need to take a look at it." Now, with that being said, that first part of your question about what are the biggest obstacles, honestly, I believe fully it is just the existing reputation or lack thereof. A lot of people have never heard of Saginaw. And if they have, I don't know if it's just because the structures are so large, but there's a perception that it is a ghost town. There's a perception that people don't actually live and work here, which always blows my mind. So, I'll tell you a quick example. I got a call today from someone who was saying, "Hey, I've been talking to this restaurant. Really great, you know, opportunity for the, trying to get them to come into the city," you know, all this kind of stuff. And they said, "Big restaurant, you know, great opportunity. Don't know if it's going to happen yet." But they said, "Yeah, whenever I reached out to their corporate and I proposed the idea to them, they said, 'No.'" And they said, "Okay, well, but here, you know, okay, Laura gave me, I have a community profile, and I have their market information, their demographics and everything. It's a really great market. It's exactly what you're looking for." And the company said, "No." So, the guy gave back again, the broker, and he said, "Look, look, you got, you know, we're exactly what you want. Trust me, trust me." Finally, the company said, "We don't want to go to Saginaw because they have a bad reputation." And the guy said, "Just look at the numbers. Just look at the numbers, please." That company decided that they would take the chance based on the numbers and the marketing information that I've generated. They decided they would take a chance. Most of these bigger places, they have their own house statisticians and stuff. So, they did their own study. They contacted the guy this morning and said, "Okay, sign us up because the numbers actually pan out." I mean, honestly, I think that's the big obstacle, is just people don't know what a great gem it is here as far as in the business community. So, selling that, I think, is really what it's about. Keeping with that, you know, keeping with this, "We're pro-business. We've got great stuff happening." Keeping that going is really important because, unfortunately, the business world's pretty fickle, and people are looking to say, "Oh, wait a second. You said you're pro-business, but we're going to keep an eye on you and see." And so, I think it's just keeping it going, keeping in front of people. I hope that answers the question. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you for the time that you put into this presentation. I know it was a lot of work.
You're welcome.
One of the things that I'm reading on your goals and objectives, meet regularly, communicate with, host developers, brokers, realtors, et cetera. I've talked to at least eight people in or around Saginaw that want to start up businesses here. I've talked with one gentleman that would like to host all of those in one facility because hopefully, if you get that many small businesses together in one place, you'll have more people frequent it. You had mentioned something, you know, about talking with these big guys, but what about the smaller people that want to develop something here? How have you reached out to them to let them know that you're available? You talked about coming to you with a business plan. You know, I've talked with a few of them, and they said, "Well, they've called. You know, you've not been in the office. You know, for whatever reason it was, you may be off talking with other people, other meetings, out having wisdom teeth extracted, whatever." But they would like for it to be much easier to be able to reach out to you, talk to you, sit down with you, develop a good business plan that's sound, because they would, they love it here. They want to stay here. They want to live here. They want to work here. They want to open up their businesses here.
Absolutely.
They want to raise their families here. The people that I've been talking to, and they've been talking with each other, they really have a great idea, and they feel like they're in competition with the big businesses.
Sure. So, 100%, unfortunately, it's just misperception. So, I don't, in fact, talk to the big, big, big businesses because honestly, we're not a market for them. We don't have frontage on a major highway. So, I'm not out there. The gentleman who called me today, he was, he's a broker. He's talking to the big businesses. I don't. So, all the organizations that I'm a part of, they're all regional and local. So, anyone who's serious about wanting a business, even a small business, is usually going to be part of, you know, one of these Fort Worth real estate groups, a business group, a financial group, that kind of thing. I also have a 48-hour rule. I call everyone back that leaves a message or that is emails. So, unfortunately, if anyone's fallen through the cracks, please have them reach out or give me their information. I'm always happy to contact them because I'm very, very serious about that 48-hour, even whenever I'm at expos. But whenever I'm at an expo, for instance, that might be out of state, it's still, I'm targeting the people who are local. I'm targeting the groups that are regional here to north Texas. I'm targeting the smaller ones. Now, the problem with a lot of mom-and-pop shops is that if they're just starting out, if they're just new small businesses, they maybe don't know where to go to get sort of that professional, you know, guidance and to be a part of that. But those are the people that, you know, I'm happy to connect with those groups. But I think that there's a lot of value in, if you're a small business and you're very serious, and maybe you've done this before, or you, you actually have the resources behind you to get something done, typically, you're going to have, be in one of these groups. You're going to have a business plan. You're going to be a little bit more progressed. If they're not to that level, and so, those are the people that I tend to talk to. So, they are small. They're not large, corporate, any of that stuff. Because, again, like I said, we're not a market for it. So, if they're not to that level yet, then, I mean, yeah, I'm happy to help them. And if you've been talking to them, please let me know and share their information so I can reach out. But I do have a very strict 48-hour rule. So, if there's anything I've missed completely, I'll take fault for it, but it's not the standard by any means.
Well, it seems like, you know, if you could publicize, advertise, you know, some sort of small business workshop, how to open up a business in Saginaw, let's get you started. This is step one that you need to do. You know, that might be useful to them because they don't know where to start. And maybe if you don't answer, I don't know if they leave a message or not.
Yeah.
I just, all I know is they said, "You're very difficult to reach." And I-
Definitely don't want that, again.
No, no, I don't. And, you know, I think they have some great ideas, but I also know that they're going to need a lot of help trying to get things started.
Mm-hmm. Well, so, we're going to be doing local breakfast forums. We're going to start doing those quarterly, and those are open to people even if they just have a business idea. We, obviously, I mean, I'm always available and out and about. I do the ED blogs to try to help with people. That conversation, I mean, I try to be accessible, honestly.
I haven't seen a blog in a while.
I did the blog just last month, and then before that, I hadn't had any readership. So, I kind of took some time off on it. But it's also been because in a year and a half, a lot has been done. I mean, you're talking about, when I walked in the door, the marketing material and the data for that marketing didn't exist here in the city. We didn't even have a cohesive sort of database of who are our businesses that are open, right? So, a lot of this stuff, unfortunately, that I've had to kind of take time out to work on are things that are some of more that really basic, nitty-gritty stuff. So, I haven't done as many of the blogs, but the blogs, the intention is to get that information out. But again, I mean, again, if you know of someone and you've heard that they haven't heard from me, or that they feel like they have an idea, please send them my way. Because the worst thing is whenever I have somebody who comes to me and says, "Well, I talked to so-and-so six months ago." And I'm thinking, "Send them my way. Send them to me. Let me help them." Because, yeah, I'm happy to schedule that. And unfortunately, I do have a very, very busy schedule. People are all over the place, and so, I am in a lot of meetings. I'm all out and about, all over the place. And so, I do have to schedule time with people. I'm not often just here where people come up in.
I might also add, you could let me know as well, right? I'm here all the time. I put my number out. My city cell for the room in the world to hear is 817-201-7316. My name is Gabe, G-A-B-E. You call me or have people call me. This is not rocket science. So, I'm sad to hear that that happened, but shouldn't have heard about it just right now, right? If we know about it, we can take care of it, and I commit to you we'll respond.
Okay, thank you.
Charlie, you're good? Valerie?
Ms. Farr?
Yeah, I have a few things. But Laura, it's a lot of work that you've put into this, and you've done, you've done an extraordinary job of collecting data and putting it out in the marketplace and marketing Saginaw.
Thank you.
A lot of folks that I'm in touch with in the industry that I serve have mentioned conversations that they've had with you specifically.
Thank you.
So, I do hear, I hear the feedback in the community. Not this community, but the community that I serve in. So, I want to first tell you thanks for that work effort. There are some things that are, that are beginning to grow out of us having a new economic development department that I think it's worth continuing these workshops. And I really believe these conversations that you're wanting to have, that you're mentioning in these areas of, of what I would call disagreement between council members. There's seven of us. There's no way in the world we're all going to agree on something. Not possible. So, what I'd like to do is address the themes that I see that have come out of tonight's presentation and maybe present to the council, or at least I'll ask the council what their thoughts are about structuring workshops around these themes. If you can go to that feedback slide real quick, I think it's third to the last. Yes, right there, feedbacks. So, on the, on the feedback, these conflicting responses are perfect for workshop topic, okay?
I agree.
And I think that on the conflicting responses, if we can set up a workshop that essentially categorizes these conflicting responses such that we can have an open conversation about what, what our vocabulary is. Because quite frankly, I don't think, I don't think people understand the same word. Vocabulary is different, especially when you start talking about technical terminology. Having a bedroom community is, it's black or white. Bedroom community in the world of economic development is a definition. So, it's not for somebody's interpretation. And what I'm suggesting is that when we have this conversation, we have it in the context of economic development terminology, okay? And introduce all of us to economic development terminology so that when someone hears the words "bedroom community," they're not instantly offended. They know that bedroom community means that X number of bedrooms and X number of square miles equals bedroom community. So, if we can take this one snapshot, this conflicting responses, create a workshop around that, that would be theme one in my mind. The, the very next slide that has the rankings, I think what's important to point out here is, and I really appreciate that you've highlighted the low values and the high values, but it would be very important to total those values out to the side. When you total the values out to the side, the lowest numbers have the highest priority, regardless of what their blend is.
Correct.
You may have a bunch of sixes across the board, but if you have three tens, that one is going to fall way down in line, right?
And I would say that that was my intention behind doing the rankings, but I had one council member who didn't rank, and then I had one who wanted to kind of separate the rankings. And so, it just, it confused it out.
I get it. But, but hey, this, I'm sorry, but if you refuse to participate, you don't get a voice. It's like not voting, okay? So, in this particular case, if you rank them, and we at least see where the priorities land in number, we can establish a conversation around that. What's the highest priority amongst all of us, okay? So, if we start the conversation based upon totaling the rankings, being the lowest number being the top rank, and then working our way down, this is the same thing that Lyle Sumac did with all of us.
Correct.
Did I say his last name right? Sumac, okay. But I think it's important that we guide that conversation on prioritizing these items. So, this, in my mind, would be a workshop in and of itself, is the prioritization of these items, and then having a conversation built around those priorities.
Understood.
So, you know, I, I think one of the heartburns that I think the community is feeling right now, and I, I don't know which council member it was that mentioned this, that they're getting feedback from the community that, "What the heck do we need an economic development department for?" I've heard the conversations outside of council chambers and outside in the community, but I have a pretty decent response. I mean, we either stay ahead of the curve or we get behind it. And the only way we stay ahead of the curve is to have somebody planted out there that is sharing our message. It's very important that you are selling us and you're sharing our message.
Thank you.
But I also want to tell you that most people know that you can get to the same place in a brand-new Corvette as you can in an old car, okay? And I think the difference is, is that folks on the council and even folks in the community would like to see a dashboard that says, "What's our fuel level? What's our oil pressure? What's the temperature of the radiator?" Those kinds of things. I know that you and I and Gabe have talked about creating specific metrics.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I've got a list of them. I don't want to talk about them tonight, but I do want a workshop dedicated to nothing but metrics so that we can all agree on what those metrics are as a council, and what's important to us to know that the car we're driving, the economic development investment that we've made, is going to get us to the destination that we want, and we've got the gauges to tell us whether or not it's working.
Absolutely.
So, I think that third piece, having a metrics workshop, is very important.
And I would like to add with that. You did mention that before. And like I told you, I'm a big data person. And so, I thought, you know, I thought that was a great idea. That is, in fact, an initiative that I was working really closely with Lewis McLean on because he'd already been collecting some of that information. Unfortunately, it's my understanding that now we're going to need to kind of reshape that. But that dashboard and that kind of long-term collection of data that could then- and that kind of long-term collection of data that could then really be compared, he had already had some of that information. I had it, and so we were actually working really closely, and I wish that I could have come here and said, "It's coming. It's going to be great."
It's okay. You know, you know it's important.
Yes, absolutely. So I don't want you to feel like you were not heard.
No, no, I certainly don't. But I don't, just out of respect for time, I don't want to go through all of them tonight and explain them.
Yes, thank you.
So, lastly.
Yes, sir.
Another thing that I'm hearing, just in the first two conversations that, that began with Mary and Cindy, is having an understanding of how we approach our deals is important to us, the ultimate decision-makers for the community. It, it's important to know what deals are manifesting, how they're coming together, if it's coming through a broker, what's the financing entity? Does the small business person need a financing entity or some kind of facility? Those kinds of details. I know it's getting in the weeds for us, but I think setting up a workshop around deal-making, okay, that explains, these are the various ways that deals come together. And let me tell you where I think that will benefit you, is it will arm all seven of us with the same vocabulary you are using, okay, in the marketplace, and when you're trying to get these folks to come to us and plant their businesses here. And if we're speaking the same vocabulary that you are, chances are, we're all going to better understand the decisions that's being, that are being made, and we're all going to understand better what you're doing.
Absolutely.
You follow where I'm coming from here?
Trust me, you do not have to ask me twice to talk about any of this stuff, because I really, I completely agree. Plus, then, I think that the work I'm doing is better understood, but it's also so much more boosted. So 100% love it, love that idea.
So I mean, I just want to, want to recap, that the conflicting topics, a workshop. The feedback on priorities, a workshop. The deal, which was the last one I just mentioned, the deal approach is a workshop. And then the metrics, a workshop. I've got a lot more, but I think we need to go visit the neighborhoods.
That's a good start.
Okay.
Mr. Beasley?
I don't have anything, but thank you for everything you're doing. I think you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
What you do helps me, so it helps me understand being the new guy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Charles. I'd like to point out one thing, especially on this slide. You can see the numbers are all over the place, as we mentioned with conflicts, but just, you've got a one and a nine next to each other. So this is the feedback that Gabe and Alora have been getting from us. So you can understand some of the churn that's been happening, because if we can't agree, how are they supposed to do, move forward? So I think it's good to bring this out and talk it out and have some workshops. I don't know how many workshops we can handle logistically, but we can start doing some of these. So just keep that in mind. If you're frustrated with what Alora Israel isn't doing, or Gabe Israel isn't doing, this is the feedback they're getting from seven different people. That makes it very difficult for them to do their job. So keep that in mind as we try to come to some kind of common ground on this. I'm glad that Alora started with the, the things that we do agree on. That's a good place to start, a good movement. So, but thank you. This is good to have some data out here. Let's, as I said, this is the first of many. We will move forward with this, but this is a good, definitely a good start. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alora.
So at seven thirteen, we convene back into regular session. Item twelve, the executive session, which I think is not required since Bryn's already gone. So item thirteen, I will see much-
We adjourn.
Patrick?
All those in favor?
At seven fourteen, we adjourn. Thank y'all. y'all.